Y'all, we've got a lot to go over. We're gonna jump right in, if you don't mind. We'll go ahead and do public safety. And then if we have any kind of time, we'll jump into fire. Is that okay?
All right, you wanna jump? You wanna bypass the administrative and executive?
Yeah, is that doable?
Do whatever you want.
All right, do whatever I want. Gentlemen, we've got a lot to do. The executive and the administrative is not too intense. I know I'm gonna kinda switch this around a little bit. And if that's okay with everyone, let me make sure. Y'all prepared for that? Or would y'all...
Yes.
All right, just wanna make sure there's no major objections by anyone. If we can go...
Public safety.
We're gonna start with public safety. Police. There you go. Then take the hot seat. I'll get rid of the finalities here. Call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Crell. Need discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report. Mr. Weaver, mayor's report.
Nothing this time.
No mayor's report. Council reports? Anyone? Any council reports?
Yes, sir.
They're being known. We'll move on to the public agenda. Citizens comments. It has 45 minutes. Anyone would like to speak? I'd like to call you up now. If you wanna speak on any topic, you have three minutes. Anybody wanna be recognized in the audience? They're being known. Citizen comments is closed. If the clerk would read the policy agenda.
Purpose of the meeting is to discuss the fiscal year '25, '26 municipal budget.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up for the police, public safety. Opening comments.
We're just here to answer the questions. And I think you, I think we have the same spreadsheet that you have up there. I will say that...
Speaking to the night, Chief, please.
I will say that our objective is in 2026, certainly a major push for recruitment. We'll continue to refine our operational plans involving large events in hopes that we can improve those events, maybe get them cheaper and make more people happy with the events. And then on a daily basis, we'll be reaching out to the community. Community outreach, we've learned over the years that the more you involve the community in what you're doing, the easier it is for you. And those are my opening comments. And then we can move into whatever direction you guys wanna go.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to open the floor up. Anybody who wants to make, has any questions for the chief?
I just, mine's a quick question.
Good, Mr. Crell.
Fully staffed, your wish, current day number of officers and fully staffed would be, your wish list would be how many?
So currently, fully staffed would be 147 would be. But I think this morning, we were at 127 this morning. So we've got a ways to go there. We do have seven that are about to come on. They've already been hired. We'll have them in the door here within the next three weeks. Naturally, those guys will go to the academy and it'll take a while for them. I think a couple of them are already academy certified, but it'll still take a good while for them to get up to speed. They'll have 11 weeks in the academy. And once they get out of the academy, then there's another close to 500, 520 hours of training that they'll have to go through with us before we're gonna turn them loose with a gun and attempt them to go out and enforce the law.
So at 147, would you have enough vehicles? So we'd need to look for more vehicles for you.
I think we have a few vehicles in the budget now. And I think we will be okay with what we have there now. But our ultimate goal certainly would be within the next couple of years, we need to be at 170 policemen. And then after that, we need to be at 200 is my personal goal. And I'll, let me preface that by saying, when Katrina struck the Gulf Coast, we had 151 policemen. We had 161 positions. Since that time, you know, the premier overtime event then was Mardi Gras. And you know what we have now. We have several major, major events. So we've really decreased the number of policemen with the size of our city. And, you know, our population, and I'm not talking about folks living here, I'm talking about our overall population is at least 100,000 people a day. And you throw events on there with the added officers, and we could get to 170 and then on to 200 after that. Now, that would, that would help us a lot with not having to bring in so many people from out of town, not having to pay them to come in. And it would also, eventually, we'll get to the point where overtime, there'll always be overtime, so I don't wanna mislead anybody. But when we get to the point where overtime would be, you would visibly see the difference.
We increased the requirement for your presence. We just can't get the amount of offers to be present.
That's right.
So the next question I had is, do you keep a breakdown of those that are on the 20 years, the 25 years, and now the 35 years as far as your players?
We can get that breakdown. I'm not having it in front of me, but...
No, 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 I was just being interested to see. I know the 35 years is gonna prohibit you from not necessarily getting more officers, but it's not as attractive as it was when it was 20 and...
I'll be completely frank. It's not attractive at all. I mean, I think that the legislators, I mean, they had a horrible task in front of them. And I think they did the best that they could do under the circumstances, but something's gonna have to be done there. This is what I would expect. Not only is it a 35-year retirement, but there's no COLA check with that also.
That's right.
So 4% of what they, what they, 4% of what's taken out of their check will go into the retirement system, and 5% will go into a 401A plan. And, you know, if I'm a young guy and I've actually, you know, got retirement on my mind, now, I'm not gonna, that 401A scares me. I mean, I'm not sure if the economy tanked, you know, what you would depend on because your retirement's gonna be very, very, very low. So this is just my personal opinion, and it's just not policemen or firemen, but it's teachers. What I expect we're gonna end up seeing, especially in the police force and probably the fire, we're gonna see officers that come, we train them. You know, they'll, they'll take advantage of going to school through us. And they'll stay, let's say they stay five years. Let's say they stay seven years here. And then they're going to the feds, because the feds will hire them. So they leave us, they go to the feds, they do 20 years at the feds. And then when all's said and done, they've spent 27 years, they've got a federal retirement, and we train them to do it. That's exactly what I expect to happen. And I'm not sure about the teachers, why that's gonna work with them, but it's gonna be something similar.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, and I, a few legislators that I've talked to, I think they understand the issue and plan on addressing it. I just don't know what happens to these ones that you're hiring right now. Do they get grandfathered in into whatever the new plan may be coming up in January? So that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tisdale.
Sure, Chief, a few questions in no particular order. How many, how many patrol cars do you have now?
Okay, so, and I was looking at that this morning, and I think I've got a pretty, a pretty good number. Although they've been texting me telling me that some of the numbers that I have weren't quite, weren't quite up to par. But we have 100, about 160 police cars right now. A bunch of those, we just use as backup units. If somebody has to put their car down. And then there's quite a few that we keep for out-of-town people when they come here. We've gotta put them in a unit, so we try to keep those units available or running. So what we do, and we purchase new units, the new units that come in, we evaluate the old units to see which ones we think we're gonna spend less money keeping them running over the next few years. And then the rest of them, we try to sell some of them, get them out of the way. Some we keep for parts. So to say that we have 160 vehicles, some of those are not really operational.
Right. How many, how many of those 167 do you estimate would be on the road every day?
Be off the road every day?
On, along the road every day?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be about, you say every day, but there's gonna be about 140 on the road that are assigned.
And I don't know where I came up with this. I might've been talking with you over the years, but these cars get a lot of heavy mileage on them in a short period of time. And we should be replacing these, or rotating some into service and then some out of service about every five years? Would that be a good number?
That's a good number. Maybe a little longer on an unmarked car, you know, used by a detective. Those, we can usually get about eight years out of them, but a regular marked unit, you're looking at about five years. And we base that on, after five years of patrol work, we start spending a lot of money to keep that individual vehicle running. Now, there's some exceptions. You know, like we had the Tahos, and the Tahos held up very, very well, but nobody can afford to buy a Tahoe anymore. So we would actually get a few more years out of a Tahoe, you know, than we would afford, but...
And so I'm thinking, just quick math, 160 cars roughly, we should be replacing, taking out of service anywhere between 25 to 30 cars a year.
Absolutely, sir. Yes, sir.
And I don't, I don't know if we do that, and I don't think we're buying 25 or 30 cars a year, is my guess. And the cars these days are pretty much going, well, let me ask you. To buy a car, I notice we've been getting Explorers lately. An Explorer, you gotta outfit it and everything. What does it cost for a new vehicle that's outfitted?
So I'm gonna go to the low end on that, depending on the vehicle, depending on how we're outfitting it. If it's an undercover car, we're certainly not putting everything in it, but there is a radio that goes in there. Somewhere around about $80,000, maybe, maybe a little more than that per car. Once you buy the car, you outfit it, you're gonna spend 80 grand.
All right. I'm sorry I missed this earlier. I think we're talking about, I think you were talking about the number of sworn officers. And counting yourself and Assistant Chief D. Back, how many sworn officers over there in the public safety building?
30, yes, today.
Yeah, so there should be 147.
147.
But as of today, our numbers are a little bit different, because I thought we had 127 today, and she's telling me we have 130. So I'm gonna go with her. I think she's smarter than me.
That goes without saying, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Well, that means five part-time.
And then, and then, so we're gonna go with how many?
130 today.
130 today, all right.
Five of those are part-time, so...
So if we have 130, so how many empty sworn officer slots do we have today, roughly? And here's what I'm getting at. And the bigger picture is, how many employees do we have in the city? And I know it's gonna vary from day to day. But I'm trying to get a feel for how many, how many particularly sworn officers, from what you said earlier, you'd like to have 170. That's hopefully is a near-term goal, but eventually, a city this size, tourist, you're looking at 200. And right now, though, we're saying we have, we believe, 130 sworn officers today. Does that include you and Chief D. Back?
That includes myself and Chief D. Back. But, you know, as of, within the next week, we'll lose two more of those out for retirement, so it's very fluid.
No, and I understand that. So about 130. We have about 130. And if we were fully staffed, we'd have about how many? Would that be 147 roughly?
That's what we're slated for. It's 147. I think if you, I think it's 148, but there's one part-time involved in that.
Gotcha. So basically, we're looking at roughly today, we're being, we're short 18 sworn officers.
And we have seven coming on.
Right.
But, yes, sir.
And then it comes and goes. It's a fluid number.
Anytime, anytime in the last year or two, 15 to 18 is usually what we're short.
Correct. Okay. What's the estimated cost to outfit a new hire, not a lateral transfer from another police department, but a new officer? Generally, you gotta buy them uniforms, you gotta provide them a weapon, what else? Training and all that, the salary. What do you estimate?
$100,000. Now, some of that money, we will get back, like the academy. Once they go through the academy, they do well there, they're out. The state will pay for that, reimburse us. But roughly about $100,000.
And I noticed, you, you may not be able, this is just an observation, it's not a question, but if I'm, if I was looking at employee insurance, this may be a Diana question. I noticed employee insurance is going up in all the departments. I don't know, Marshall and Kenny and I meet with Cy tomorrow at 10 o'clock here, and you and Rick are welcome to attend that. I don't know if he's been in touch with y'all or not. He has. So these are the best numbers he's given you, and yeah, that's reflected in these increases, correct?
The information that Cy provides is based on current enrollment, so it's approximately 560 employees. When we do the budget, insurance is included for every single employee that has the potential to get it. So all vacant positions also have an insurance expense that are not reflected in Cy's numbers, because he's using the current census.
Okay. So these, these increases by department are based on your calculations?
Right. It includes the information that Cy provided for reinsurance, premiums, aggregate...
And the number of positions, your budget.
And then it also has dental, med analysis...
Invision and everything.
Life insurance. It includes all those.
All right, thank you.
Our, our cost of those. Workers' comp is on a separate line, though.
Correct. Saw that. Thank you. And Chief, I'm just, I'll run a little report with the help of the CAO, Mr. Weaver, and HR. And just looking at the, gotta find it here. Thinking your, I call it a position vacancy rate is roughly about 12 or 13% in the department.
That sounds fair, yes, sir.
And citywide, I think it's about 10, 10 or 11%. It varies from month to month by department, from department to department. Let's see. Animal control, I noticed there's an, there's an increase. Bless somebody out there again. There's, there's an increase of 147,000 in salaries to 206,000. Are we adding another animal control?
Yes, sir.
So we're adding a third?
Adding a third animal control officer. And the reason for that is, we get the calls on the weekend, and if it's a, sometimes, you know, we try to push it off until, you know, the weekend's over, but many times we can't. So we have to call somebody out. With one more animal control officer, we'd be able to pretty well run that animal control seven days a week. Wouldn't be 24 hours a day, but it would be pretty close to seven days a week.
Thank you. The only, the only other question I have deals with, I think Diana, you called this the mayor summary sheet or whatever. And there, where it gives an employee count for fiscal year, there's a column for fiscal year '26, there's a column for fiscal year '25, and then there's a column for proposed change. And I know this changes a little as we go through this process, or at least it has. But are we, are we looking, right now, according to this, we're looking at adding 29 employees? For next year? That's citywide, it's not just department. But for example, in the police department, they showed 231 employees, excuse me, 216 employees in the police department, and adding 15 positions would bring you up to 231 positions in the police department. And that's the number of positions that would be fully funded. I'm assuming is what we're looking at. So in the legal department, they're looking at a reduction of 15 employees to 14 employees, which would be a reduction of one. Community development, we're looking at adding one.
Well, I'm gonna stay on the police department, if you don't mind.
Sure, no, go ahead, Rick.
Moving around to the different ones. I give Chief Miller credit, because what he's looking at is what we discussed, I think, two weeks ago. Councilman Marshall, as far as being able to bring in some of the non-sworn to do some of the work inside the office, while still getting the sworn officers back out on the field as well.
Right.
Now, that some of those that were gonna be hired are gonna be the non-sworn side, so that he can, at that point in time, then move some of his sworn officers back out, be doing patrolling, our investigations, whatever he needs at that point in time.
Right. No, then that makes sense to do. I mean...
And those are what we're taking a look at at this time, under the police department side.
Gotcha.
You can look, there's two intel research specialists, and that basically allows us to put an officer back on the road if we can move them into intel in a real-time crime center, which everybody knows we've been working on the camera system for years now, trying to get this up and, up and going. But it's always been a lack of manpower. We moved two in there. And then booking officers, that's another issue. We have to take a full-time officer, or two full-time officers, a lot of times, and put them in booking for the people that we bring in that are arrested. We can hire booking officers cheaper than we can pay a policeman. So we asked for four booking officers. I'm not sure where we're gonna get them from. They may come from Harrison County. If they wanna come over and work for us, they're, they're already trained there, so we wouldn't have to send them through that academy. And let's see. And the animal control officer, we talked about, one of those.
With the overall effect on that, Councilman Tisdale, making certain that we're trying to take down some of this overtime.
Right, no, that's...
Because if we can utilize and pay for them, get them out back on the patrol, then we can utilize them.
Right.
Besides paying overtime on them.
That's one thing I didn't check, but usually it's a million, 1.1, 1.2. I don't know where we are this year.
Currently, right now, overtime with the police department's about 800,000.
Right, okay.
As much as I've got.
Yeah, it's gonna be close to a million, I think, for you.
Well, it's over with. We've still got several different things, so...
And you could say that we have five, what we call, part-time officers. And we had proposed that we allow seven more part-time officers. You know, I'm not sure where they'll come from, but they'll, they can work at Gulfport, and then when they're off, when their days off, they can come over and work for us. They just have to go through our training program. And it would be the same for, you know, any, anybody on the coast, where they would allow their officers to come and work. The only thing there is, we have to pay, we have to pay them a salary naturally. We don't have to pay their benefits, but we do have to cover their insurance, and we have to cover their, their workers' comp, and we have to cover their retirement, their portion of their retirement while they're working for us.
Right, just like we do for officers that come down for these special...
Right, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Diana, just one other question on, again, on this employee count. The most accurate number we have for fiscal, this current year is 646 employees, I think. Is that accurate? Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Attender, the witness.
646 positions that were budgeted.
Budgeted, correct. They're not all filled, but they're budgeted. Okay, thank you.
But Councilman Tisdale, hopefully you'll pay the software system that you approved. We'll be with you.
Nice one. Nice one.
All right, gentlemen, let's stay focused.
Finish that one.
Let's stay focused. Is that it, Mr. Tisdale?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Mr. Shoemaker.
Director, just two questions. With the pay raise increase last year, did you see an uptick in applications?
We did.
Noticeable increase, you think, or...
Well, it was an increase, you know?
Okay.
We thought we were gonna do very well there for a while, and we did. You know, we did, we got a few young people in, but that's kinda, you know, it's kinda backed off a little bit.
And I think some other cities have given pay raises. I think Harrison County immediately.
They have.
They gave a large pay raise to all the deputies.
I guess we forced them into that.
Yeah, right. So I guess, looking at other departments around here, locally on the coast and the state, I guess, we still, are we still pretty much in the same position now as we were last year?
We're not the highest paid, but we're certainly up there close, locally, locally. You know, you get up north of state, there, it's, we would not be able to...
Oh, you're right.
...care with them, yeah.
So still around here on the local side? I mean, on the, locally, on the coast?
Yeah.
And I know it's always a battle, and I, I know we never get those positions filled. I just...
Share with you if you need it.
And I guess you think the answer is more money?
Well, I think we've discussed that lately, you know, among us. I don't think we'll ever be able to raise the pay enough to keep officers. So we're looking at some other, some other directions that we can go that might help us keep officers. And one would be, and I mean, I guess we can talk about this, we're in the midst of working on it now, and we're nowhere near where we need to be, but we looked at childcare for employees, and that's not just the police department, that would be, you know, citywide. But I can't make any promises on that, because what I've seen, it's, 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 there's a lot. It's very difficult to do. But if we could actually cut the childcare cost down half of what people are paying now to different childcare centers, if we cut it in half, you know, if somebody's offering a dollar more down the road, you're not going for a dollar more if you have childcare that you can afford. Most people are paying somewhere, the best I can tell right now, somewhere between $4 and $800 a month for childcare. If we could get that down to half of what they're paying, that would be a real incentive to keep them here.
Right. No, I think that's...
But again, I don't, I do not wanna, you know, paint a pretty picture that that's gonna happen, because I have looked at it up and down, and there's a lot to it. Not saying that we won't make it happen, but it's, it's a lot.
Well, I think that's a great idea. Just, and just my last question. Leases on the vehicles, on the patrol cars? I know a lot of agencies are doing that now. And I know that we never are able to, just because of money and the cost to buy and outfit a vehicle. But what about leasing, a leasing program to...
Well, we looked at a leasing program last year, and we had actually started to move forward with it. And Diana, you may remember, there was, there was some other issues with it. Where in the long run, I think you actually, you actually, you pay more.
Oh, really?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Diana.
On the, on the lease program?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And it looks good, and you can get all the cars you need right now, and get them up and running. But in the long run, you're going to, you're gonna pay for that, you know?
Okay. No, that's fine. I just, I wasn't, I haven't done any investigating in it. I just know a lot of departments had gone to that.
And we have, we'd even looked at some refurbished cars from other agencies, but man, you're taking a big chance, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. There's some, actually some companies that buy police cars, refurbish them, and sell them. But you're taking a huge, huge chance with that.
Right. I appreciate it, Director. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, sir.
On that, just to let you, ever, the entire council vote right now, if you take our revenues and then take out payroll, we're about 73.6%. That's where we're at, as far as pay. So that's why we're looking outside the box. How are we able to support all the employees without just money? Going money, because as soon as we throw money at it, somebody else is. Gotta be something outside of that. I give Chief and all the directors credit, they're looking at different ways in which we can maybe help bring that family environment back to where we care of the employees. But 73.6%, that's a scary number, understanding how we're paying right now.
Yeah, that puts it all in perspective. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. We'll start all the way on the end. Mr. Crell? Wake up. I got you. I know, they cover everything. Ah, no, they cover everything. Mr. Marshall? We'll try to, we'll try to kind of spread that out. Mr. Marshall, anything else?
Oh, two things, sir. First of all, anything in your budget to get some extra help for Henry Beck Park?
Well, that would just be, that would be a police issue. I mean, we're not going to hire anybody just for Henry Beck Park, but, but we know there's an issue there, and we've dealt with that over the years, and it would, it would rise, and we'd beat it back down, it'd rise, and we're kind of there in the rise portion now. So we do have something that we're putting together for Henry Beck Park to hopefully kind of make it more family.
Chief, don't you all monitor issues, and if there's activity, you kind of reposition your resources?
Absolutely. That happens through, through our intel department every day. They're constantly, that's how, that's how we figure out what kind of calls we're answering and where we need to put our, our resources, is by what the intel division tells us.
Okay. The other thing is, community policing, okay? Was anything I did built into your budget?
I'm sorry?
Anything like for community policing? To get my community more involved in policing themselves?
We are a community-based police department. We've been that way for probably, we worked under that model for probably the last 10 years. That's why, that's how we established the, the Biloxi Citizens Academy, which has been very successful for us.
How does that work?
So they just, we, we bring them in. If anybody that wants to participate volunteer-wise, we bring them in. We certainly do a background check to make sure that, you know, they, they need to be there. And then we bring them in once, once a week, and maybe two days a week now, and teach them everything that we can teach them about police work and why police officers do what they do. It's been very, very successful, but it's only been successful because we've had, you know, officers that have been willing to give up their time to make it successful.
So what you teach them, what do they do?
What now?
What you teach them, what do they do?
Well, what we ask is when they graduate, we ask them to come back as a volunteer and help us with some things, and some of them have. Some of them have come back. We've even hired a couple of them as policemen that went through, went through the academy, came out and said, "I want to do this for a living." And then some of them, you know, that I absolutely know I don't want to do it for a living now.
So you say they come back volunteering, volunteering to do what?
Whatever we, whatever we need volunteers on, whether it's, it's, you know, helping out with something with dare, or whether it's, you know, cooking. We do a lot of cooking for different organizations, whether it's cooking a meal for them, whatever we ask them to do.
Okay. Let me ask you this, then. What if we had a program that was designed where we can offer better housing? Back in, I'm from Natchez originally, and at one time, we had a lot of problem with the, we were called, we used, back in the day, called youth centers. And what they did was they moved mobile homes. They had three major youth centers up in Natchez. They moved mobile homes on those properties. And the officers stayed there. They got free housing. They kept the cars parked there, and they dropped the fighting room. At that time, I wasn't a guy, but they definitely, he's got a game, but they, they were, we weren't game back then. This is game now. But back then, we thought we was bad, but the officer was there, and the cars was there, and the H C came out and they played by everybody else. They made sure that the gates was locked, things like that. But they also had a way with patrols, they did. So anything like that maybe could possibly work?
We actually do that now. Different apartment complexes will approach us about having a resource officer there, and we let them work that out between them. You know, sometimes they'll give them like discount on their rent, and that's what they're expected to do. Make sure everything's locked up, you know, make sure there's not any criminal activity going on, but we, we actually do that now.
Okay, so just thinking outside of the box, if the city of Biloxi just happened to have a house over in East Biloxi, and the officer was able to come and be there next subdivision and move in, would that be something that...
If you offered a policeman a free house, is that what you're saying, sir? Yeah, you'd be lined up? If that's what you're saying?
They'd be lined up.
Yeah. What you think, Rick?
You know, we gotta take a look at all the side.
Man, you should have been an attorney, man. Oh, shoes adjusting.
You gotta take a look at all the side. And I'm very familiar with what Chief Phillips offered about Arthur Park, like, and from that, whatever we do, not, I don't, got to take care of that. And also, that's what we were talking about, not everything that I'm very nice, that's outside of the box, and I like.
Old jacket, yeah.
For one, make sure that now, make sure that now, soon, I want to move into, and then move forward, that would...
Well, you know, like I say, I just wanted to make sure it's possible. The devil's in the details, and that's what we do. We get in there with the devil and figure out the details. But I believe that would probably be very good for East Biloxi, you know, some kind of incentive. Man, we get two officers over there living, and, so I would be interested in talking to you more about that.
Sure. All right, that's good. Mr. Diney?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask you one question. What was the reason to get pickup trucks lately?
So pickup trucks, generally speaking, throughout the department, we had no choice there for a while because you couldn't buy any kind of vehicles. There was, there was nothing out there, and the only thing we could find that was, that was police-rated were pickup trucks. And, and we said, "Well, let's try a few," and they, they went over very, very well. And now I even see the Howard Patrol is buying pickup trucks. So it all came from not being able to buy vehicles.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so, but it's worked out very well.
Is it like special police officers get them, or they just was in line to get one?
I'm sorry, what?
Like, anybody would have just been in line to get one, or is that a special police just driving those?
Well, the first ones we got, we took the supervisor's cars, since they had a cage on them, and turned those over to patrol units, and then we put the supervisors in the pickups. But now we've, we've even expanded that. You know, we have some undercover guys that are driving pickups. And again, they couldn't buy anything else, but it's worked out well.
They look nice.
Yeah, they hold up well, too.
Hi, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, Chief, I've just, you know, been reviewing all these budgets and departments. So salaries, you know, if we hit these budget numbers, the net effect on your salaries would be somewhere over a million dollars with the... Yeah, it would be. With the increases, and if we hit that full employment number, it's an increase over the budget last year versus this year, probably somewhere around, I'm calculating salaries and benefits, come up to about a million-dollar increase or a little bit more.
Can you talk about the additional ones that we have here?
I'm talking about comparing what we budgeted last year to what we're budgeting this year.
Yeah.
And if we, if we add full employment on these numbers, we hit these numbers, then the investment in the police department, just in labor and benefits, is a million dollars. That's, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I think that's a good thing. We've been recognizing it, that we need to do that. Transportation cost on here, I just want to understand, is that the purchase of vehicles? It's 540,000?
The, what's, where are you looking at?
Over last year, and I know we were short some vehicles last year. Is that what that transportation line says? Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, what, what's the line item number on there?
Let me look it up.
Purchased arrived. 571, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, 571,000.
And what does that represent?
That's buying vehicles.
That's buying vehicles. And we were a little short last year because we had, we had to make decisions on, hey, do we increase salaries or do we buy vehicles?
Recollection, I think we bought 13 vehicles last year. We probably needed 25, but we bought 13.
Yeah, sure. Okay, I'm just, just trying to get that done. And then software is a pretty sizable increase over the last year, relatively speaking. It's a $182,000 increase. Can you tell me what that is going to do and what that software investment is?
Software is going to be that IBW station?
Yeah, I got it here somewhere. Yeah, here we go. Okay, let's see. So part of it is just a standard annual increase of all contractual software. All of it goes up every year.
Understood.
Once we reach a point, you know, where we don't, we don't think it's benefiting us or it's too much, then we'll look for something else.
Yeah, it's not, I just want to be clear here. It's not 182,000, the expense, it's 182,000 more...
Right.
...than it was last year budgeted.
There's a couple of additional programs. One is pad tracks, and what that allows us to do is to track our evidence and to track all of our, our capital investments. We can, we can, we can run an audit and make sure that those items are where they need to be within a matter of just a few minutes, which is, you know, when you have a department our size with that much stuff, it...
Sure.
You've really got to have a way to do it.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. The other thing, building, and I'm sure it relates to the new building we're taking over. Last year, building expense for the police department was around 100,000 and some change. This year, it's 200,000 and some change. Does that represent we're refurbishing the new building on, over in East Biloxi that we, we obtained, or is it something else?
Let's see, we have, uh, let's, yeah.
That's for the specialized training room for the K-9 unit, or for ESU, I'm sorry, place for the K-9s. Patrol briefing room, we need to...
Yeah, so, so we've been in the building quite a few years, and our patrol briefing room is, is in shambles, and that's a morale issue that I would like to get cleared up. And then there's a couple other things there with, with that, that, yeah, the A-frame at the garage needs some, some, some help badly. So that, that was the increase there. And any kind of construction work you're trying to do now is off the chart.
Okay, and then conferences, that has a little bit of an increase, 80 grand or whatever it is. What's the plan for conferences? Is this typical training, or is this an annual conference we're sending?
So I'm going to go out on a limb without looking right there for the 80 grand, but I'm going to say that the 80 grand are specialized schools that we send. Once, once our guys take over as a supervisor, we require that they go to one of three or four specialized schools so that we have them all thinking the same way about management and supervision. And some of those schools are very expensive. It's not unusual to pay 30 grand to get an officer, but it's, you know, it's eight or 12 weeks depending on the school, and to get them through there, get them back. And that also is a little bit of an incentive. They can't, they can't up and leave us without paying that back for so many years. So it's a little bit of incentive to, to keep them.
Okay. I just want to make this statement, too. Of all the departments, when we come to this part of our responsibility during the budget, and you've heard this before, I can't emphasize, police and public safety is probably the number one priority to give you every resource you can to fight crime and to keep our citizens safe. I would say the fire department, if they're not even, they're right a notch or just a hair under it, and we have to give the fire department everything they, they need to do their job roles.
I agree with you on that, servant.
I know, I know, I get it. But, and then I think below that comes Public Works, and then probably below that becomes Parks and Rec. But we want to give all the departments everything we can, but we only have so many dollars to spread around. So hopefully we can hit, I know this is a review, I don't know if we can hit every single number in here. We appreciate y'all putting this together, and we're going to do our best to, to make, make this budget happen for you, this proposal. And if there's anything else that is essential, you know, let's, let's get it done before we close the chapter on approving this budget. Any other questions by council on police? Any, anything else? Okay?
We have some good detectives. Maybe we can find them other three employees running around.
Do, I saw one.
I said, "Maybe we can find them other three employees y'all got running around."
Yeah, yeah.
That's a laugh.
Thank you.
Okay. I didn't catch your assistant's name here.
I'm sorry, I'm Laura Slater. I'm in the finance department at the police.
Okay, we want to thank you for also being here today and kind of giving some complimentary insight, you know, and answering some of the questions.
Laura and her husband both came to us, and they're both literally rocket scientists.
Ah, okay.
I'm serious.
I believe.
Karen.
Okay, thank you.
We're very, very fortunate to have them.
We may need that skill set before it's all said and done. Stay close.
Yes, certainly will. I have...
All right, we, we thank you. There's been no other questions, we'll move to the fire department, and we'll put that on the table.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to start on this side of the table and come this way next time. So y'all be prepared coming this way.
Show of hands, all ready?
Yeah. He said he'll arm wrestle you if y'all want to see who's going to go first. Jamie?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Any opening statements, Rick, by you or the chief or assistant chief?
I have a... I'm sitting here, it hurts right now, I'm... It's going on. So, y'all.
Credit, that's all we do is fire.
So I give the fire department significant credit that going from a two to a one, and they're in that process right now of doing that, that is equipment, manpower, training, all of that taken care of. Same thing with the police department. They've done an outstanding job here from those. But it does take money. You, all of y'all have heard the mayor talk about, just in the last two to three years, those fire trucks that that fire department needs have went from 570,000 to 970,000. So over the last couple of years, that inflation rate has went through the roof. Currently, right now, I know we have four 2008 models that they're utilizing, and as we go through that, that's about hitting that 20-year mark. That's, that's pretty good, even for a firefighter. I had to get at least one jab in there.
I'm, I'm good with it.
So, but those are things in which we've got to take a look at as well, too, and may not come through the budget, but it may be something that we take a look on a capital aspect as well of doing that and trying to think outside the box of how do we take a look at these 10 and 20-year projects that we can then not have to spend one year paying for it and then reap the benefits for 20? Why not have the 10 or 15 years and pay it over time? So those are going to be things, especially with the police department. We hit on several things from that, and I'll regress a moment if you'll allow me, Councilman, to go back. I know currently we need roofs on several different buildings from police and fire, and we also got Christie taking a look at doing a wrap around the police department to do a water seal. We've utilized that at other facilities in my past that it's worked at. So I know I've got what you've made of it as well, too. So we'll take a look at those and see how, how are we able to utilize this and be able to come in and hopefully save and bring back some of our facilities by doing preventative maintenance? And some of them are just going to have, they've hit their life cycle. So we've got to be able to redo those, but then we've got to be able to look to the future and say, "All right, the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, these are the equipment items that we're projecting that we're going to have to do along as well doing that preventative maintenance to get it to that 20-year mark."
Sure.
At this time, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
All right, Chief, I know you're a man of many words, so I'm going to give you the mic, but as you get ready to kind of do your opening statement, you know, I see in the budget, I see the increases in salaries that we did. I don't see a lot in too many of the other categories, and I just want to make sure if we're able, I don't want to just maintain that too either. I want us to get to that number one rating as hungry as y'all are and, and everybody else is. So speak to that a little bit in your opening statements, and then we'll start with Councilman Gray.
So, yes, sir. In, in regards to personnel, you know, last year, you know, there was the, the pay raise talk, and, and, you know, our thing is, is we're more on the retention side of things. So if there is a pay raise to come for the, for the men and women that are on, we'd rather see it in the upper ranks. So, I think that you... Y'all hear that? Is it just the speaker? Okay.
I thought that was your knee, a nervous knee right there. Okay.
So, you know, what we're trying to do is increase personnel. Right now, our minimum staffing, every day, we have to fill a 46 positions. Better? Maybe it was because of that. Right now, we have to fill 46 positions. Current staffing with the new recruits coming on shift yesterday that we trained for 20 weeks, it put us at 51, I think 50 maybe on one shift per shift. So that doesn't leave a whole lot of room for vacations, sick leave, annual leave, FMLAs, anything along those lines, sending people off to the State Fire Academy for further training, because I want to say we've hired close to 80 new personnel in the past five to six years, and that's just filling positions as people retire or resign. Well, those are new, hungry, young firefighters that really are engaged in the, in the job and really want to learn the position. They want to become paramedics, they want to provide a better service to the city, or that comes at a cost. So what we've done just recently, in fact, working with the mayor and Diana and Rick when he came on, we proposed a whole revamp of our training division. Instead of having a, a training chief with two trainers per shift, A, B, and C, we proposed a training chief, he stays the same, but doing, uh, training officers that are Monday through Friday, eight to five, unless they're needed in an overtime capacity, to where we can train our new recruits, which like I said, we do two groups twice a year of, of new recruits. So that's, you hire on tomorrow, where you're going to go through twenty weeks, that's going to be about two and a half weeks of hazmat, uh, basic hazmat, it's called awareness and ops. Then that rolls right into eight weeks, roughly, all depending on what the State Fire Academy's schedule looks like, but about eight weeks of, of firefighter basic, that's one thousand one, that's the basic firefighting. And then because we have a, a basic EMT, EMT basic is our minimum qualification for a new hire, we go ahead and roll them into that, and we do it pretty much faster than anybody else can in this region. We do it in about six and a half weeks. So all total, we're putting them through about twenty weeks, counting the HR factors and, and that sort of thing. So, um, you can only do that twice a year, and you try to hire as big a groups as possible. Well, when you do that, you can't train a whole bunch in any other aspect, and we've still got drivers, we need, we need a new driver, so we've got to do a driver operator. We've got company officers, we've got instructors, all your specialty disciplines, like your confined space, rope rescues, swift water for any of our flooding situations. So, um, you know, our intention with this revamp at the training division, and, and we just did interviews this morning, so we're, we're trying to fill those positions currently, is we can conduct a recruit training, and then at the same time conduct a more advanced, an officer, or something along those lines, and we would have the staffing to do that, and it would be consistent with these people. They would be, it wouldn't be day to day. So that being said, of course, the increased personnel comes, is pulling some of those guys off the trucks and putting them in a training division. You know, we've also, uh, we've got a training room, but now if we conduct two classes, we need two training rooms, so we're, we're proposing a metal storage building, one that would be able to house some of our spare units and a lot of these training props, things that don't need to be out in the weather, but don't necessarily need to be in our pumper halls, taking up space when not in use. But we would carve out a section of that to be more of our technical training, where we could put the recruits in the metal building, because they're going to be getting dirty. I mean, they're in and out of heat buildings, and they're doing rappelling, they're doing ladders and ropes and learning how to even roll hoes. It's a, it's a dirty job, what we do. And that would be kind of conducted there, and then we would do more of our advanced, where we're inviting other departments in to do our company officer training, and our instructor training, and more in-house, where we need the TV screens and computers and, you know, do presentations and that sort of thing. So, that's something else that we proposed to them, and then, um, and then, of course, Rick kind of touched on it, um, you know, the, the EPA emissions regulations that are put on diesel engines are killing our engines. Ever since Regen came about in oh-eight, and then, of course, the death fluid came a couple of years later, it was all, we're a very small portion of, of the diesel engine community, I guess you'd say. So, they put them in place and made engines to be an eighteen-wheeler that runs thousands of miles in a week. Whereas, we crank an engine at two AM, run from Porter Avenue to the Bar of Age, might be mile or two in total transit, it runs hard, and then it's shut off. And what we're seeing is that just last year, we had to replace a ten-year-old engine. Nothing of our guys' fault, it's just, it, the, the head pressures got too high, you know, seals leak, it's just not being run how it should, and that death fluid, as great as it is for the, I guess, the environment, it's terrible if it sits, because it does crystallize. So, that was fifty-five thousand just to replace an engine. We've got another one sitting over at Empire right now, one of those oh-eights that Rick referred to, um, you know, and we're trying to work with them, but we've, you know, we're sitting at seventeen thousand and still don't have a good solution to fixing this engine. And that is one of four of the same engines. So, there is a lot in our industry that are proposing, you know, of course, you don't want to go to delete, you know, all of that, you know, that's not the solution. So we're trying to reach out to our, our federal representatives, senators, representatives, to maybe propose something that would exempt our little corner of the world from having to abide by a lot of these EPA emissions. So there's a lot, a lot going on. Be happy to answer any questions on how we're going to get there.
Yep, we'll start with Mr. Gray.
With us being new, you know, we, we don't know a whole lot about this budget for y'all, but let's get some stuff. How many fire, how many firehouses do you have?
So we have ten.
How many?
Ten.
Ten. And you have, how many in Wool Market?
Uh, let's see, we've got one on Old Sixty-seven, that's the newest, one of the newer ones, and then we have on Wool Market Road there, and then we have one out in Eagle Point, so I would say three.
Okay, I mean, for, for us newer councilmen, just trying to get familiar where they're at.
Yes, sir.
You know, because a lot of us don't maneuver. That's, that's about all I have. Like I said, we're trying to get new to this, all this is still new, so.
Yes, sir.
But I, I just wondered how many fire stations we have.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Marshall?
Good. How's the mail?
I was just looking on here. I'm trying, you should, I told you, fire station?
I, I really.
What you saying on here?
Look, it, it, it all depends on the station. There are some that, that have, yeah, there are some that have, uh...
Got to bring your own food?
Well, you know, the, the old guys, they, they cook well. I mean, you can, you can roll in and find somebody with a, a big elephant tuna sitting on a, in, in a cooler, and then you can roll in and be with the new, healthy, younger guys, that they're going to come in with, um, you know, tofu wraps and things like that, and they kind of do their own thing, because they've got a whole fitness thing. So it's generational, I would say.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Mr. Creel?
Just one question, going through the parameters, if you look at, on your capital outlay, it looks like you had a grant, one fifty-eight for forty-seven thousand, two eighty-three, and it's, was that grant not renewed, or do we not apply, or is it just a one-time one?
We possibly, which, which number was it?
It's, uh, zero one five five one sixty-eight hundred, and the grant project was GR one fifty-eight.
That's one fifty-eight, was that the AFG grant? Was that the one that we just finished off? Yeah, so that one was one that was, uh, good for, I think we had about three years is what we ran it, because we ended up getting an amendment, and we just closed it out, or were in the process of closing it out.
I just wanted to make sure that you weren't missing any money. No, thank you.
Yeah, all right, sir.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, your department has the, has the lowest vacancy rate, that means unfilled positions. And typically, according to my calculations, in any given month, it's about three percent, which isn't bad, but also, based on what you said earlier, when folks are going on vacation, when they're injured, uh, surgery, things that they're ill, light duty, that kind of stuff, it goes back to the overtime situation. Your overtime, do you know what it's, what it is today, or what your budget? It's going to be about a million, give or take, just like the police department, I think. And some of that is grant money, I believe.
Uh, no, sir.
But not all, but not all of it. I thought some of, some of the grants have overtime.
Or grants for the police department.
Okay.
Our department on there, as far as overtime, things such as that. But yeah, he'll run about a million dollars in overtime.
Right, give or take.
On that, but that's also why we're trying to get a few extra employees going.
Right. All right, thank you. Um, off the top of your head, best guess, what's it cost to outfit and train a new recruit, and how long's it take to get that new recruit on a truck making regular calls, roughly?
Um, let's see, so twenty weeks, roughly, might be twenty-one, twenty-two weeks, depending on how nice the Fire Academy is on getting us in their schedule. Rough estimate on training that new recruit?
Outfit and training, uh, in one hundred thousand.
Wow, okay, so it's not cheap. You've, we've got an investment in these folks. Okay, when they come to us, thank you. Excluding fire trucks, about how many vehicles do you have on your inventory in the fire department?
Excluding fire trucks? Let's see, if I had to take a rough...
Well, figure, it doesn't have to be, I'm just curious.
Um, we're probably sitting with another fifteen, but that would be pickup trucks, uh...
Right.
You know, that sort of thing, spare vehicles, port vehicles.
Boats.
Uh, if we count boats, you'd probably approach twenty. Yeah, we could.
Boat counts the combat.
And chief, if you would explain, and I think I know, I think I remember what this is, I remember asking you once before, vehicle outside force?
So that is it.
Explain what that is.
So, if we do anything in-house, it comes out of a different account, but if we have to take engine non, for example, that has an engine issue, and send it over to Empire, that is pretty much the only Cummins diesel mechanic in the area, that's where that comes out of. So if we have to re, replace a, a gasket, or a head, or, you know, something with a valve, it's going to go over there, we don't have capabilities in our garage, so.
Thank you, okay. That's all I have, thank you, Wes. Wonderful job.
Mr. Shoemaker?
Sir, I don't have any questions.
All right, Mr. Creel?
So, with the hundred thousand, similar to what Chief Miller said, is you invest that much into your, your firemen, they have a, a protocol in place to where if they leave within a certain time, based on retention, they have to reimburse, do you have that similar feature with firemen?
So there's a state law, yes. So if, um, you know, we train up a firefighter, they get their one thousand one certification, and they leave within two years of obtaining their cert at our dump, then the department that they go to, if it's in the state of Mississippi, has to reimburse us. Now, problem is, is that our guys don't leave to go to Gulfport, or Askagoula, or even North Mississippi, anywhere. They go to Slidell, or they go to Mobile, where the, um, the retirement is generally better, and the salary is at least comparable, and probably better. Perfect, thank you, sir.
Chief, I got a couple of questions. So I don't know if this applies to us anymore, we used to apply for SAFER grants. Do we still qualify for that program in any capacity?
So, we can apply.
And if you can explain to the rest of the council what a SAFER grant is?
So SAFER grant basically will pay, and it, and it's been in different variations on what they reimburse and that sort of thing, but for all general purposes, you can apply if you're awarded. So say we applied for fifteen, um, new firefighters, and we're awarded the SAFER grant. They'll, this typically, it's for, say, a hundred percent their first year. They'll pay everything for those fifteen firefighters at a hundred percent. Then at year two...
That hundred thousand dollars per firefighter, they'll pay a hundred percent?
Yes, very well, could be. They'll pay the gear, they'll pay the training, right.
The remaining, right, three years after.
So there have been times where we've, um, received it, and it was a hundred percent for three years. There have been times where we've received it, and it was a hundred percent, and it dropped to seventy-five, then it dropped to fifty, basically weaning the city off of that federal funding and letting them go. We have applied for it twice now, uh, I think it was twice, one time denied, and then the next time denied. Um, and I think it's just generally, everybody's hurting, and they're giving to the less fortunate communities versus us, so.
Are we still applying, or?
Uh, we have not this year. We've been coordinating with Michelle Crowley, our grants writer she used to work for us several years back. She usually reminds us, hey, it's time to apply again, so I'll have to reach out to her and see where we stand on that one, but yes, we will apply again.
Um, I want to talk about the training station, Fire Station Seven. I know it's been in effect, and y'all do some training, you, you can train any kind of, or simulate different kinds of fires. Is that still being utilized? Is it anything that needs to be upgraded? Can you talk on that a little bit?
Um, you know, so absolutely, it's being utilized. In fact, we're, uh, we're quickly outgrowing it, our, our training chief, Nick Dubuson, he's been in there for about a year and a half, I'd say. You know, it's in his blood, basically his whole family was fire department, and they were all training. So he's really taking it. In fact, he just did a pilot program with our new recruits that just hit the trucks. They did a, a whole Thursday night. We didn't invite you guys out this time, because we wanted to see how it worked out, but it was a huge success. It actually incorporated some of our older guys, and then our new recruits, and got everybody together. It was conducted from about three-thirty in the afternoon till about five-thirty AM. So, um, but it was, uh, I mean, we, we haven't, we've got more emails on this from seasoned twenty-five, twenty-six-year guys, just saying how this was the best thing they've done in training in a long time. But that, it kind of goes back to, so for the past, oh, God, since COVID, we've had to do all of our training in-house for these recruits, because the State Fire Academy got backlogged. They only let any one community put four people in a recruit class up there. Well, our small classes are six or seven. So, you know, we're, we're having to kind of be inventive on, on what we do, and we've partnered up with Gulfport, you know, when we've needed to, and then, you know, they'll throw us a curveball up at, at the State Fire Academy of saying, all right, you can't tell us when you're going to do a class unless you have ten or more students. So like this class, this past time, we had seven. So we had to kind of go by their regional delivery, so it kind of delayed us here and there. So we actually reached out to St. Tammany, and were able to conduct a rope rescue class with this new recruit class, first time we've ever done it. They weren't even certified firefighters, but they were doing a firefighter recruit class. But through that, we learned that a rope rescue class that we do in-house through the academy, us doing all the training, them providing the material, and maybe an instructor or two, for one week, costs about seven thousand dollars. We reached out to St. Tammany, did the exact same thing, but using our equipment, and we did it for about three hundred dollars.
Wow.
So we're, we're, we're working new ways of, and making new connections in Mobile, St. Tammany. The cost of doing that, though, is that these guys are being exposed to those other communities in different states.
I get it, I get it.
So you're under risk. So what we're trying to do is bring that training in-house, where we're the...
We can recruit them.
Where we're the premier.
Well, you mentioned you, we're outgrowing it. What does that mean? I need to understand what that means, because I, that's a, I've been very proud of that, that training facility.
And I, and maybe I misspoke. Outgrowing it might be a little strong. So it fits about sixteen to twenty students in that, in that training room, and that's why we're looking at the metal building, carving out a little bit bigger, because there are classes that'll allow us to do thirty, where we can't fit thirty, but we could if we had the, the space. A lot of times we'll utilize the visitor center. You know, we brought in the National Fire Academy to do two, two-day courses for some of our officer-level training.
Okay, I got it, I got it. And if, if somebody like Councilman Tisdale wanted to go fight a fire in there, I'd let him fight a, a certain fire, he wouldn't sing his hair, and there's two or three on here that, that wouldn't affect, but anyway, maybe y'all can do a, a challenge to him or something like that, so. Anyway, thank you, chief. Anybody, anybody else have anything? Anyone? Anyone, did we miss anything?
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
He had to be up here.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and wrap it up. I know y'all wanted me to get done about five o'clock, so I'm going to wrap this session up. We've still got administration, executive, and then we've got some other departments that we'll, uh, we'll do at, at the end of our next meeting, or, or before our next meeting. We need to do it before. Can I have a motion from someone that we will have our next budget meeting before, like four o'clock? Does that sound good, everybody, four o'clock at our next council meeting, before our regular meeting? I need a motion.
I'll make it.
All right. Motion by Mr. Shoemaker, I have a second.
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
What time do you want to do that, Kenny?
Four o'clock.
Okay, thank you.